Speaker is back in session. And we are in the second reading file. On the top of the agenda is Bill 228-32. Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On Bill 228-32, I'd like to make a motion to place it on the third reading file.
As introduced.
As introduced.
And you're going to speak on it?
I could briefly, Madam Speaker.
Okay. You don't have to. It's up to you.
Sure. I believe our colleagues have had ample time to review the bill, and it's pretty self-explanatory.
So, on the motion then to send 228-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill 233-32, Senator Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would again like to make a motion to place 233-32 on the third reading file. I understand that there may be an amendment to this bill, so I guess I will speak briefly on it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Bill 233-32 is intended to require that every meeting of a board or instrumentality, whenever they have their board meetings, that a period of public comment be afforded to the community. Right now, it's not required in law. It's a courtesy that's offered by these entities. But we would like to make that be a requirement, so that the community will have an opportunity to be heard whenever there's any matters of importance to them. And it does limit the comment period to five minutes, but it does require that a comment period be afforded in all of these public meetings.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
[Inaudible] Madam Speaker, since it was possible, I was given the opportunity to speak a little bit on Bill 233 in support.
233.
233, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And, Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the bill. I think it's kind of, you know, sad, is that a hard word, or is that a too harsh of a word, that we have to have legislation for this purpose? But I certainly, as I said, support the author and the clear intent of this bill. During the public hearing, even some of the members of this body were surprised at some of the testimony in terms of the experience of some of our general public attending meetings, trying to provide commentary or comments to the substance of the meeting. Nonetheless, it's good legislation, and I support it. Madam Speaker, there was a concern expressed specifically by the Civil Service Commission on issues and meetings that, in particular, that, you know, surround personnel matters and things where non-sworn-in individuals or those who are not there to testify in terms of the actual process of that quasi-judicial proceeding or court proceeding almost like. And there's other boards that do that. So with that concern, they asked that we proffered an amendment, and it's been passed out to all of the members. And it basically will be to add a new sentence to the end of Section 3. And the sentence will read, "Any agency when conducting business regarding personnel matters of a particular government employee shall be exempted from this public comment requirement as it relates to that particular personnel matter." And so that's just very specific, very confined to that issue, Madam Speaker. So I would proffer that amendment at this time.
On the amendment, no objection. Oh, okay, amendment. I have the Vice Speaker and then Senator Tomada.
I just want to thank the author of the amendment for introducing it, because at the hearing, Civil Service did make the suggestion, and I apologize for not including it in the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Tomada, you're recognized.
If the mover of the amendment would yield, I'm just wondering, why don't we just say outright, "The Civil Service Commission is exempt from this provision"? I mean, as I understand it, that's what, I guess, whenever they convene, it's to basically discuss personnel matters. And all other agencies, when they discuss personnel matters, they go into executive session. So it seems a lot clearer if we just say, "Civil Service Commission is exempt."
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I do yield, Madam Speaker. In my discussions with Civil Service, they mentioned that there are other proceedings at other autonomous agencies and the like, and that it would just cover government-wide with regard to this. I believe, once again, if I was clear in my discussion, that the former speaker is correct. The personnel matters are dealt with in executive session. I think this is to avoid any type of, once again, open comment period on those matters when the board would perhaps reconvene in their regular session. So that was the discussion that I had with the director, and he wanted it to be government-wide. So I certainly, at this time, don't have an objection to that issue, or, you know, to making it specifically for Civil Service. But that was the communication that came to myself. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, you still have the floor? So you're okay? All right. So on the Duñez amendment, hearing objections. So ordered. On the main motion, then, to send Bill 233-32 to the third reading file without any objections, Bill number 234, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 234 on the third reading file and to have an opportunity to briefly speak on the bill.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. What this bill is intending to do is to require the Office of Technology to establish a protocol to back up critical electronic data necessary for the efficient operation of agencies. Back in April, Madam Speaker, we passed the law that created the Office of Technology. It's almost been one year since that office has been created, and I'm very honored to be a part of the body that planted that seed, so to speak. But as we now nurture this into something that's going to actually grow and contribute to the better operations of our government, it becomes necessary for us to, at times, focus on getting certain things done. And in the months previous, we've seen the loss of critical electronic data in the Office of Vial Statistics, prospective birth certificates and death certificates. And if we had this protocol in place for the backup of that data, we wouldn't be suffering the interruption of operations and the uncertainties that were caused by the loss of that data. And so we created the Office of Technology in April. It never established this protocol. This bill was introduced in December, and the testimony that was received by the acting administrator of the Office of Technology stated that this bill is redundant, when in fact, it actually isn't. This bill requires a 90-day timeline from the point of when it is passing to law for us to actually implement this backup protocol. And since that December, the introduction of the bill in December, and since the hearing that we had subsequent to that, we still have not seen a protocol to back up electronic data critical to the operations of this government. And so it becomes necessary for this body and for this legislature to consider tightening up the language in the law that created the Office of Technology, so that we set a 90-day timeline for the implementation of this very critical component. And I hope that my colleagues can please join me in moving this item forward, so that we can make sure that the critical electronic data of our government and the issues that need to be addressed to make that a reality takes place within 90 days after passage of this bill and its actual signature into public law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Morrison.
I'd like to rise and commend the author for introducing this legislation. However, I have some reservations for Bill 234. When I first heard of the files lost at the Department of Public Health, Madam Speaker, I too felt it was prudent to also introduce something like this to ensure it does not happen. But as they say, Madam Speaker, cooler minds prevail. You see, Madam Speaker, I spent many years as a political science major at the University of Guam, a staff assistant to then-Senator Cleo Moylan, over a decade experience as a cabinet member in three agencies in the executive branch. And what I've learned, if there's one common thing that I've learned collectively through my education, experience, and my public administration experience, Madam Speaker, it's that we can't legislate common sense, and we have to be very mindful of the separations of powers. I too am upset, Madam Speaker, of the lack of understanding, as my colleague who authored this bill noted, that this data was not backed up. But I don't think it's necessary to legislate this. My primary concern to Madam Speaker is that Bill 234 does teeter with the separations of powers. Employees at the Department of Public Health did not back up the data, which was very unfortunate. So this bill tends to create a law to tell them to do just that. But my concern, Madam Speaker, is where does this end? Where does this type of measure? And if the Department of Parks and Recreation employees did not cut the grass at EPO for 30 days, are we going to legislate that and tell them that they have to cut the grass every 30 days? If employees didn't come back after lunch at a decent hour, are we going to legislate that so that they come back at a decent hour? I don't believe, Madam Speaker, that this is good public policy, and I believe there's too many laws that complicate not only the lives of our people, but complicate the mandates that are already in place to govern many of our agencies. I believe, Madam Speaker, the appropriate way to deal with something like this was a phone call to the managers of the Department of Public Health, a letter to the Governor of Guam, or perhaps, as urgent as it sounded, that it even forced my colleague to legislate this or put a bill in place to address this. Perhaps we should have called a oversight hearing to address this matter. But not another law, Madam Speaker. As the author noted, that we just created this office. Yes, it took a year to stand it up. I appreciate the help of the body. I appreciate the help of the author of this bill, the co-author of Public Law 32-10 that established the Office of Technology. It took some time working with the administration to vet out some individuals to serve as the chief technology officer. We do have that individual in place, Madam Speaker, and I've met with the acting chief technology officer to address this very specific issue. And he has assured me that the protocols are already being placed, being put in place to address this issue. Public Law 32-10 already outlines this, that part of the duties of the chief technology officer is to develop specifications, funding mechanisms, and participation requirements for the executive branch agencies to protect critical government data. So, Madam Speaker, as I noted earlier, that a process that I felt would have been more necessary to address this was addressed through, not only trying to make contacts with the managers, but working with the administration, and of course, working with the current acting chief technology officer. I believe, Madam Speaker, these are how things should get done when issues like this arise, and call a meeting, work together to find a solution. And I stated earlier, there is a protocol being put in place to establish this. I commend the author for trying to see that it maybe be prudent to legislate this, but I just don't feel it's good public policy, knowing that we could have sat down with the current acting chief technology to address this issue. And I also believe, Madam Speaker, again, that it does conflict with the separations of powers, and as my core belief, that we need less government. And we do have these mandates that are already in place, and a clear provision outlined with the help of the author of this Public Law 32, the co-author of Public Law 32-10. That's something we will have to call to the acting chief technology officer of these requirements. There is a lot of requirements within Public Law 32-10 that outlines many things for the chief technology officer to get done. And it's, what I want to caution there is that we're extracting certain provisions out of these, the Public Law 32-10, knowing full well that this office has just been stood up, and we start extracting certain provisions from Public Law 30-10, and start putting timelines on each of these provisions. How much more are we trying to overwhelm this office? It was my understanding that we're working in the body that will come back in six months with any recommended additions, revisions, amendments necessary to Public Law 32-10 that would allow the Office of Technology to run more efficiently and to provide the resources to carry out the mandate much more effectively. So, Madam Speaker, I ask if the author could reconsider moving this bill to the third reading file and make a phone call to the acting chief technology officer to see what he's been doing to address this issue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, I'm in the motion. Okay, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as I, you know, listened, of course, to the author in this explanation in introducing the bill and the necessity to introduce the bill, and I understand, of course, the retiring speaker as well, is that, you know, you can't legislate, you know, common sense. But at the same time, the one thing that we've forgotten, and in this case, whether truly it is a separation of powers, that's a different matter altogether in interpreting exactly what that separation would be. It is this body that created that office. It is this body that listed a plethora of duties and responsibilities that this individual must do. And I think what is happening here, as you read this, is that I'm reading two other responsibilities, that then it will be for this individual to ensure that, one, is that there is this standard protocol for everyone. And that's how legislations are created, based on some incident, a critical incident that has occurred in the government, any breakdowns. You know, we look at that, and then we start to, one by one, create then legislation for that. This then may be the way it is written, and I'm having legal counsel do this, but I'd like to share, is that I would like to make an amendment then, is to add these as additional duties and write it in such a way that then it will be expanded beyond exactly what we've just passed. And because although, yes, we like to think that, you know, somehow that these individuals in charge, or anyone for that matter, would think ahead, but sometimes we don't. So therefore, let the law guide them, so to speak. So then, in this case, we want to make sure that it's not just for public health, where the glitch took place, where we lost, you know, over, what, 3,000? 3,000 or 30,000? I'm not quite sure of the number of birth certificate data. It's no wonder why someone came to my office also upset, that when they asked for a birth certificate and even a death certificate, they were very surprised. I mean, by the way, it was very painful for this mother and grandmother, who came on island to help her daughter, only to find out that they can't get a copy of the death certificate of, you know, their child, because they said they just didn't have the information, and it's going to take some time for them to be able to manually go and collect all the data before they can issue out a certificate. And, you know, you would think that in this day and age, yes, in this day and age, where every department and agency has a computer, that that's what we should do. We ourselves, when we use the computer, we're taught, the very first thing you do is that before you, not even before you finish, is that every so often, you go in and save. And not only do you save, then you want to have a backup information and data, so that then, should anything ever happen, you would always be able to retrieve the data. So this makes sense. What we did in the legislature one time, you would think is common sense, right? With all the information that we have, and the fact that we've all, now, most departments and agencies have websites, and we pay individuals to maintain the website. But yet, we require every time we pass legislation, and even in the budget, and even the reportings every quarter or monthly, we always say that they must post this on their website, they must electronically put them on a database, and then submit to the legislature, no longer really even, you know, a printed copy. So, and you would think that, yes, that is common sense, too, because we're all at this age. So that's the amendment that I would like to proffer, and I know I don't have it right now, but that's the gist of it, really, is to make this, these two things here, the inventory and the standard protocol be, shall be made, as part, rather, of the duties and responsibilities of the chief technology officer. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You're giving me that look, and I'm not sure how to read it. Can I take a brief recess?
Let's take a short recess. Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the brief recess. and thank you for the brief recess. Spoke to legal counsel, was able to download the legislation. And so, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my amendment, because there's apparently a list of it, and that, I guess, in this case, maybe because it says L, maybe the mover or the author would make that, request for that technical amendment for legal counsel to address. But I'm going to withdraw my amendment.
Motion had been withdrawn. Hearing no objection. Any other? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, I'll invite the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd first like to request that the, with respect to the bill, that upon its passage, if it does pass, that the legal counsel does technically amend the language to properly reflect its new position in the law.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, the, one of the earlier speakers made a couple of statements that I don't quite, I don't quite fit with, fit in with. One of them was that you can't legislate common sense. And for me, that, I almost don't know how to even look at that. I think common sense is the first place where we should start. You know, that's where we should start in determining whether or not something needs to be legislated. And sometimes, some things are just very, very plain. And I find that the most effective way to try and address issues is when we try to legislate actual common sense things. So, I would always be the type of senator that would try to start with common sense when it comes to the business of legislating. I think that's where we should always be focusing on. What is actually common sense? The other question that was brought up was where does this end? If we do legislate this, and we set this 90-day timeline for the implementation of this backup of electronic data, where does it end when we start legislating the timelines for when work is supposed to get done? And for me, Madam Speaker, it ends when the job gets done. You know, this Office of Technology was created in April. This issue came up with no electronic data being backed up in August. This bill was introduced in December. You know, so many instances of when it became very clear that this work needs to get done, and it still hasn't gotten done. You know, I was offered, I was asked, why don't you pick up the phone and call and have a conversation? Madam Speaker, when these things happen, we don't need to all of a sudden talk about it some more. We need to get moving on it. This happened back in August. August, September, October, November, December, January, February. It's been seven months since we lost critical electronic data in this government, and we still haven't adopted a data backup plan. Seven months of somebody being on the payroll in the Chief Technology Office, when this problem clearly manifested itself to our entire community, and we still haven't gotten this backup data, this backup policy adopted. And now, this bill is going to say, we're going to do it in 90 days. Once we pass this law, that has to get done within 90 days, because we're tired of waiting for that. And the suggestion is, oh, they're already working on it. Well, if they're already working on it, then surely, at least over the next 90 days, they should finish it, so they'll be able to comply with the law. But by us introducing this bill, setting this timeline, we will be mandating that the job will actually get done. Where does it end? It ends when the jobs get done, Madam Speaker. That's when it ends. The question came up of separation of powers. And for me, as an elected official, there is only one power, and that's the power of the people. And if it's the job of the chief executive to get it done, if it's the job of the legislature to get it done, if it's the job of the judiciary to get it done, the three branches of government, then we got to get it done. And in the event that things aren't getting done in any of our branches of government, we must do everything we can to make sure that ultimate power of the people is followed through with in their best interest. Now, in a lot of legislation, Madam Speaker, we mandate timelines. Even the budget of the government of Guam has a mandated timeline of when it must get transmitted. So, whenever we want to talk about separation of powers, let's make sure that we're keeping in mind the ultimate power in a democracy, the power of the people, and keeping in mind whether or not the work that we're doing is in their best interest. This has nothing to do with making sure that somebody is able to do what they want, or someone else is able to do what they want. We all have to be working for the people. And backing up critical electronic data in this government must be a mandate that we embrace for our people. We embraced it when we created the Office of Technology back in April. We wondered what happened to that when we lost critical data in August. We still don't know where the work has gone into resolving that issue, all the way here into February. It now falls to us to mandate that, within at least the next 90 days, that outstanding and very, very dangerous issue is addressed. Because we want to worry about where does it end? Where does it actually end? Do we got to lose hospital records? Do we have to lose tax records? Do we have to lose criminal records? Court records? Records in Department of Land Management that indicate who owns what? Where does that end? As long as this issue is outstanding, Madam Speaker, I am very, very worried about whether or not we're going to have a repeat of that issue that affected our entire community back in August. So, Madam Speaker, this is yet another example of how we need to embrace what is responsible and abandon however somebody might be feeling about it politically. This is good for our people. This is necessary for our government. And it behooves us to set a timeline to act, because action has not ended up in results as of this date. And so, I humbly ask my colleagues to please join me in setting this 90-day timeline for the final adoption and implementation of a data backup plan in our government, so that we don't need to be worrying about all the other data out there that our people rely on, and our government relies on to operate. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So, on the motion then to send two, two, three, four, to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that bill 241-32 be moved to the third reading file.
And you're going to, and let me see, is it? Oh, it's as introduced, okay?
Yeah, it's introduced. There was no amendments.
And you're going to speak on it?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and colleagues, I introduced Bill 241-32, together with Senator Tom Adam and Senator Tina Munya Barnes, to clarify some ambiguity and some, and to make consistent what's currently happening before the mayor's and the vice mayor's offices here on Guam. What this bill would do, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is that in the event there is a vacancy in the positions of the office of mayor and vice mayor, and if this vacancy occurs within 270 days of the next election, then a special election shall occur in that particular village. As the case is now with these particular offices, in the event of a vacancy in the office of the mayor, the vice, I'm sorry, 240 days, not 270 days. In the event where there's a vacancy in the office of the mayor, and there's a vice mayor in that particular village, the vice mayor does not have the choice of whether or not he or she wants to accelerate to the position of mayor. They have to assume the position of mayor. And then, the governor would have to appoint a replacement based on the recommendation of the Municipal Planning Council. And so, what we're doing here is we're really doing things that promote and respect democracy, and also would not require the vice mayors to assume the mayor's position, that they would have that choice, Madam Speaker. And what I'm particularly excited about this bill, it will provide for the mayors and vice mayors to seek another elected office while they're currently mayor or vice mayor, whatever the case may be. As you know, the senatorial election is every two years. Our mayors serve for four years. And so, it could be that in a non-election race, they could try to seek a seat here in the legislature. And it provides that when an incumbent has sought and won election to another office, and assumed the new office, constituting voluntary relinquishment of that office. And so, that would be a provision to declare a vacancy, which would initiate these proceedings should this bill become law. And so, I ask our colleagues to support this bill. The mayor's council unanimously endorses this bill, because it seeks clarity with their respective positions. But more importantly, it speaks to the will of the democracy. We have one instance where the people of Aggett lost its longtime-serving vice mayor. And when that position was vacant, we saw that the will of the people was not respected, because a particular party held that seat for all of those years. And so, when the vacancy was filled, it was of the opposite party or the administration's current party. And so, this didn't sit well, Madam Speaker and colleagues, with the people of that particular village. And so, this bill would make sure that whenever there's vacancies, and time permitting, they would have special elections in these villages. I also have an amendment that I'm moving, and I made copies. It's to add a new section five, actually. Add a new section five, and it amends Public Law 3268, Chapter Eight, Mayor's Council of Guam, relative to their lump sum payment reimbursements. And it just changes the fiscal year from 2012 to 2013, which is what should have been in the FY 2013 budget. And so, I made copies, and I'm asking that this be moved as an amendment to Bill 241.
On the amendment? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion? Does anyone like to speak on the motion? On the motion then to send Bill 241-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 257-32, Speaker Banglin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Aunt Sedesmae, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 257-32 CORs introduced be placed in the third reading file. And I'd briefly like to explain the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill is simple and straightforward. What it does is, it does, first of all, the bill would require that, as we saw in this budget that was just transmitted, that the practice has been that when the executive branch has been submitting its budget, it would take all of the budget, all of the revenues, appropriate them out, satisfy all the needs of the departments and agencies under its purview, and then leave everything else on a lump sum basis for the legislature to kind of read what's the priority of the administration with regards to the other departments and agencies of the government of Guam. And in this case, it's basically the Department of Education. And so, the bill, Madam Speaker, would just require in future budgets that when the governor submits the annual budget of the government of Guam, that he would then include an allocation for the Department of Education. We had originally asked that he include the University of Guam and the Guam Community College. But testimony received from the University of Guam, which we assume applies to the Guam Community Colleges, they were concerned about having to pass their budget through the executive branch, and requested that they be excluded from the bill until such time as the determination can be made with WASC whether or not that would in any way interfere with the autonomy of the institution. And so, in deference to that request, I would offer the amendment that on page three, line 21, that the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, where those words appear on 21 and 22, that those be stricken from the bill.
On the amendment, so it's not just on this page, but throughout the bill where it's mentioned then that we'll strike out the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, is correct.
Thank you.
On the amendment, wait, without any objections? So ordered.
And the other section of the bill, Madam Speaker, as we once again saw in the budget bill, is that the treatment of tax credits kind of gets mishmash. They'll treat tax credits as a revenue, as a revenue that is an offset against the revenue source, whether it be, for example, if it's a tax credit against the business privilege tax. In one instance, they treat it, recognize the tax credit, and deduct it from the revenue source. In another instance, they're very quiet about it, and they don't tell you that there is another tax credit, and it's not reflected at all in the revenue source. And so, what the other sections of the bill would require is that the tax credits have to be reported, and they have to be accounted for in the same manner and fashion as all tax credits. So, what the requirement in the latter part of the bill, beginning with section six, is that there be a listing of the tax credits in the budget, that they be accounted for, and that there be a reporting requirement for all tax credits. And again, this is just so that we, you know, we always argue, well, it's a tax credit, it's not cash. But it is. Because if that credit wasn't taken, then that tax, then that tax credit would be even a tax liability on the part of the person, the recipient of that credit, and it would have been accounted for in the revenue, and accounted for in the appropriation. But right now, we don't see all that. And so, the other section of the bill sets forth the reporting requirements, the recognition of these tax credits, and the annual reporting requirement. This is all based on recommendations made by the public auditor with regards to how should we treat tax credits? That they should be transparent, they should be recognized as revenue, they should be recognized as expenditures, and they should be reflected in a budget that we pass every single year, so that there's no question on that. And so, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for the support in the bill.
On the motion? Would anyone like to speak? Senator Rispicio, you're recognized on the motion.
Can we just get a one-minute recess?
Take a brief recess. Take a brief recess. Back in session. Senator Respecher, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 257-32. I want to commend our Chairman on Appropriations and Office of Finance and Budget for his leadership in presiding over a budget process year after year, and to doing whatever we can to make this process as apolitical and nonpartisan as possible. As you know, Madam Speaker and colleagues, one of the biggest things with every budget that's facing every legislature is we seem to have it where that it becomes a political football. A political football in the sense that the governor does his revenue estimates early on, and magically, the revenue estimates fit the expenditure requirement for that upcoming fiscal year. And so what we did several years ago is we made it a requirement through the budget process that you establish a special accounting services group, which consists of classified employees of this government, to partner up with the employees of the Office of Finance and Budget chaired by the Director of Office of Finance and Budget. And so what these classified employees do, like from the Department Administration, from Bureau of Budget, they participate in the revenue projection process of the annual budgets that we have to preside over. And then you have the Special Economic Services Group, which consists of the agency heads, together with our Chairman on Appropriations, to do more of a general five-year type revenue forecast. The thing that I always express concern in the budget process is when the governor submits his budget, as we see now in February, those projections may have been last year's revenue estimates, or maybe as late as December. And so right now, we're seeing the governor say that this government in the upcoming fiscal year is going to collect $55 million more than last year. And so we have to leave that to the Special Accounting Services Group and the Special Economic Services Group to really vet that number out, to make sure that that's truly the revenue projection for the upcoming fiscal year. And if there's a significant variance, then I'm hoping that the governor would participate in this very excruciating process of identifying how those expenditures are going to be revised accordingly. But, Madam Speaker and colleagues, what I think we should ask the governor to do, and I'm offering an amendment that I believe copies are being made, is to add a new Section D to Section 4107, Chapter 4, Title V of GCA, to read. D, Revised Revenue Estimate. By the 1st of July of every calendar year, Imagallan Guam shall provide a revised revenue estimate for the subsequent fiscal year that will incorporate revenue data for the first six months of the current fiscal year. And so what this will do is, we know by law that we have to pass a budget by August 31st. We would know by law, if this thing is passed, that come July 1st, the governor will also be culpable in what that revenue estimated number is. And so he would be required by statute to participate with us through this budget process. So he does not submit a budget that has grossly inflated revenue estimates, and then leave it to the legislative body to make all the corresponding revisions, whether upward or downward on the expenditure side. And so I offered this as an amendment in our strong desire to want to move this budget process along to where we just deal with the facts. So we just deal with the facts, we just deal with what the situation is before the governor and before the legislature, and that we don't ever create an environment where the governor can say, well, that's the number I believe, and this is what we have to pay for, and if you don't agree with the number, reduce the number and make the cuts. Because I just don't think that's also fair to this branch of government in any process to want to provide for what the priorities are going to be for any fiscal year. And so I make an amendment to this bill that would require by the 1st of July that the governor submit a revised revenue estimate to Ilasla Turan Guam for the subsequent fiscal year that will incorporate revenue data for the first six months of the current fiscal year, so he will let us know one month before we're required to pass a budget if he still stands by those revenue estimates.
On the amendment. Speaker Panglinen, you recognize?
I would like just to amend the amendment. Rather than July 1st, make it July 15th, because that would allow the month to end of June, which is the complete quarter, and then 15 days to kind of just gather the information that's come in. So just to amend the 1st to 15th.
On the amendment to the amendment, which is to change July 1st to July 15th. No objections? So ordered. On the main amendment, we'll just add a new subsection D to Section 4107, Chapter 4, Title V for GCA. No objections? So ordered. On the main motion. I know, Senator, you did your first amendment, but you still have the floor and the main motion? I, Tabia. Senator Respecher. Okay, so he's done. So then on the main motions, anybody else who'd like to speak? There being none, on the motion then to send Bill 257 to the third reading file without any objections? So ordered. Thank you. Bill 258. Speaker Panglinen, you recognize?
Thank you, Intez Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 258-32-COR is introduced, be placed in the third reading file. And I'll just briefly like to explain the bill.
You may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, right now, there's statutes that's kind of silent on the use of tax credits for the purchase of real estate property. And what we've had in the recent controversy with the, and the difference of opinion with the Tizen, is that the governor's been able to, the legislature passed an authorization to lease property using tax credits. The governor has taken that a little further, and now has used those lease payments to actually purchase property and increase the amount of the tax credit that was authorized by the legislature. And so, Madam Speaker, the purchase of assets through either cash, through a purchase agreement, really should rightly be based upon appropriation of the government of Guam, so that we know what our obligation is in future years, that we have to set aside for the purchase of that asset. And so what this would do, Madam Speaker, is it would continue to allow, under general authority, the ability to lease property, but for lease purchase agreements, that those lease purchase agreements really should have specific authorization by the legislature. And so the bill would remove the authority to enter into lease purchase agreements without specific authorization by the legislature. The bill, or the statute, also allowed the governor to enter into leases and lease purchase agreements for the judiciary. And that, Madam Speaker, is from the old days, in which we did not have an independent judiciary and a unified judiciary. And so this bill would continue the separation of powers this year, if you will, in which the legislature in the past years have, has exercised its separate branch power to exercise its own leases based upon the appropriations provided by the legislature. And so it would remove the executive branch's ability to go out there and lease space with a judiciary branch, and leave that to the judiciary branch itself under its own powers and authority as a separate branch of government, separate branch of our government. In addition, Madam Speaker, it really allows the leases to run concurrent with the term of the governor. We have governors that are now sitting, exercising lease purchase agreements for 20 years under a single-year authority. And so this would allow and require that these leases be reevaluated with every new administration, basically. And it's very similar to the provisions we have that says that leases are subject to the appropriation. And so leases are subject, then, to the term of the governor and the renewal of that based upon the incoming administration. And then Section 3 would reiterate the conflicts provision that we have had in other legislation on the tax credits issue, that tax credits must remain with the original, that no elected individual or any individual with authority over the tax credit shall be a recipient of the transference of that tax credit. And this is a provision that is existing in other legislation that we've passed on the issue of building through leaseback, through tax credit, and the ability to transfer those tax credits, Madam Speaker. So I ask my colleagues for their support.
On the motion. Senators, Senator Klish, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this legislation. I think it's a great, yet another great example of the leadership of the retiring speaker in his efforts to make sure that there's accountability and transparency in the government. I did have one amendment that I would like to propose for consideration by the body, and that's on page two, line 25 and 26. It says, "Elected or appointed official of the government of Guam that executed the lease or any amendments to the lease on or after June 1st, 2011." This is with respect to the conflicts of interest that are prohibited. I would like to put it out there for us to consider as an amendment, striking elected or appointed, and just putting "any." Any official of the government of Guam that executed, and then after-executed add, or participated in the execution of the lease or any amendment to the lease on or after June 1st, 2011. And the reason why I would like to proffer that amendment is because not only do we have elected and appointed officials who are signing off on these leases, but we do have a lot of employees who are very influential in the final determination of whether or not these leases should go through. I have seen on several occasions, officials come down before this body who are not appointed, but who testify with a high degree of authority with respect to the agencies in which they work. And so in order for us to make sure that the accountability and transparency is airtight when it comes to the issuing of tax credits, I would like to make sure that no official who is involved in the determination of these deals that are resulting in the issuance of tax credits is able to in any way avail themselves of it. You know, the last thing I would like to see, Madam Speaker, ever find out about in the future, is if an official who wasn't appointed turned out to actually receive tax credits, you know, from the person, from the entity that got that deal on the table, you know, turn out to receive tax credits as almost a form of kickback. It gets very difficult to be able to keep track and monitor that. So I would like for the body to consider the prohibition of the conflicts with the extension of these tax credits to include not just elected and appointed officials, but any official of the government of Guam that executed or participated in the execution of the lease or amendment to the lease on or after June 1st, 2011.
On the amendment, then, on page two, lines 25 and 26, delete "elected" or "appointed" and add the word "any," so it's "any official of the government of Guam that executed or participated in the execution of the lease." On the amendment. No objections? So ordered. Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion, in motion, Senator Limchaco, you recognize?
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, in that same section, Section 3, you know, and this is just as a follow-up to the amendment that was previously made, no objections to the amendment, but, you know, on line 26, if you read after that, it says, "Amendments to the lease on or after June 1st, 2011." You know, that's in the past. Is it our attempt to legislate that that be done for all those leases entered from the past date? Or is it meant to effectuate the change going forward? Obviously, it would be more prudent to change that date, you know, as of today going forward.
Speaker Panglinen, do you answer the question?
Yes, this is an amendment to Public Law 30-37. So that's why that's the date that was in Public Law 30-37. So it covers that, those leases.
But why would we attempt to go back?
Oh, because it's there already, and there was another conflicts provision in that statute.
But is it the intent of the amendment to require to go, to elicit?
Forward. It's from, it's that lease, any amendment to that lease.
To the lease dated that, June 1st, 2011?
That's right.
Going forward?
That's the reference.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the main motion. On the motion then to send 258 to a third reading file without any objections? So ordered. Senator Respecher, I understand that at least for 233?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we bring Bills 244-32, that's the procurement bill?
No, 233.
I'm sorry, sorry. 224, and as well as two...
No, 224 is already on the second reading.
Yeah, but to revert, refer it back to the Committee of Original Jurisdiction, which is Vice Speaker Cruz's committee.
Yes, so on that motion then to revert 224 to the Oversight Committee without any objections? So ordered.
And on Bill 233, that's in the third reading file, that's a bill that we just entertained now at the, also the request of the sponsor, I move that that also be referred back to Vice Speaker Cruz's committee.
On that motion then to take 233 out of the third reading and send it back to Vice Speaker Cruz's committee. No objections? So ordered. Okay, so we're going to take a recess.